Speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited. Three minutes on the product equity while speakers ensure meeting is reasonable length. If you have more information, it can be summarized in three minutes. Please provide leave behind materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time is at last. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from the school or member or administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.
We have a flag. See it?
Here it comes. You can choose anyone you want. Right? Always flexible.
Let's lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for this stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Please pause for a moment, stop please. Thank you. Hey, hope you're gonna enjoy our informal and tight meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the gentleman? Good motion, Mr. Oobens, their second. So, Mr. Oob, big ride, go ahead. No. Our school board lays on here. Yeah. If they show up, well, it's good. Donations.
Sorry, I'm a little behind here. Oh, no. Griffith Plumbing Heating and Cooling donated $1,200 to sponsor the class of 2024 t-shirts.
Let me think, is there a motion to adopt the minutes from August eighth? Motion, Mr. Oobens, their second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Oobens. Discussion. On favor, I?
Aye.
Close, no. Mr. Oobens, did you have a chance to read this?
I did, and everything should be in order. Seventeen percent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to prove the consent of the? Thank you. Second. Mr. Meyer, seconded on favor, I?
Aye.
Close, no. Mr. Oobens, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will remind everyone, we are in a tight space, but we do not have microphones, so remember to speak out loud in your teacher voice so everyone can hear you in the back. And we hope that part of the spotlight today, I don't know, bring Mr. Seward up for the RCHS spotlight. You're up first, Mr. Seward, but part of that is this wonderful space. So I'm gonna let him talk about that a little bit and why we're having our meeting in here so you can sort of get a feel for it, but if you'd like to come on up.
Carlos Seward, I live in the Jackson Magisterial District.
Yay!
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Madam Superintendent, Madam Clerk, members of cabinet, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this beautiful library. I want to thank on behalf of our administration, faculty, staff, our students, the work of this board for procuring the funds so that we can have this beautiful space. If you'll look right behind you, that is our library proper. That is where many of the books, materials, the seating, the fun happens right there. In this space, this is our library classroom space. This year, we've already had eight classes scheduled in this space that we use in the new line board, this space to engage in learning for our kids. If you remember, the library before was beautiful. It was ancient, it was dark, a little drab, but one of the things that Dr. Grimsley and Dr. Bolt, our executive director for operations of the administration, did was it brought some lighting to this place, some color into this place, and it doesn't look beautiful. And so this is a space that we hope to flex, have more board meetings at your pleasure, and definitely teachers can use for meetings and for classes in the future. This school year, Mr. Chairman, members of the board has had a fantastic start already. And the high school enrollment is up, particularly in grades eight through 10, so we're really happy about that. Our students are learning, everyone's getting into the groove, but most importantly, a lot of learning is going on. That's the most important thing. That's why we're open for business. And as I walked through classes today, I had the opportunity to walk through eight classrooms today, and the students are engaged, they're alive, they're energized, the teachers are happy to be here, and it's just a really, really good feeling. My principal colleagues, I was talking to one of them just yesterday in Henrico, and he's struggling with how do we get our kids motivated? How do we keep our football games safe? I said, well, come to ours, and so, and you'll get the feel of how an American Friday night should be spent. So, Rappahannock County High School continues to be the darling, the Commonwealth, and the envy of others. One of the things that we have here at Rappahannock County High School, members of the board, Madam Chairman, Madam Superintendent, is outstanding staff and outstanding programs and outstanding students. One of the things that the superintendent charged me with this year is, hey, Carlos, there's a real need in the community for our health sciences to be beefed up. And here's what, some things I want you to think about, here's some things I want you to consider putting in place. One of the things that Rappahannock County High School is starting this year is a emergency management services course. Our sister school divisions in the area, Falkir, Prince William, Page, Shenandoah, have similar programs. Dr. Grimsley and I looked into this, we have a partnership, a partnership with the Rappahannock Emergency Services, our partnership with Valley Health is still in place, just left there in Winchester about a month ago. And so we have a really good direction with our health sciences program. A lot of that is anchored in emergency management services right now with all of the different houses that we have in the county. That population's getting a little long in the tooth. Know if this is anybody? That's the same, Mr. Oobens. I didn't say that, Mr. Oobens. I didn't say that. They're getting more, they're getting more seasoned, and so one of the goals of the superintendent and myself, Rappahannock County Public Schools, is to have avenues and doors for students to have really great paying jobs, to serve their community at the same time, to get stackable credentials, and to have some fun. And we were able to procure a young woman who is fantastic. And so the superintendent asked me to spotlight the high school. Two of our students couldn't make it, they had some scheduling conflicts, but I do want to bring their teacher, Ms. Catherine Waters, to the dais Catherine. As Catherine comes up, she's better known as the mother of Kyle. She just had a second birthday yesterday. Ms. Waters is our EMS slash health sciences academy coordinator, excuse me, teacher right now. She teaches a class course along with her duties, as you can tell, she just got off a ship right now. Members of the board, I encourage you, come by the school first thing in the morning at eight twenty on time, or you'll be getting a coughing. But come by the school at eight twenty and spend ninety minutes with us. You will be amazed at the work that she's galvanized. This is a class, members of the board, that we didn't have on the books last year, and right now it's maxed to capacity. Our CTE classes are maxed at the number of twenty, the state says that, and that's where we are. So Catherine, if you could talk about the program yourself, and what do you guys do with that, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you very much for the introduction. As you mentioned, my name is Catherine Waters. I do have a two-year-old son. My husband and I live in Castleton, so we are very near and dear to the community. And I share that because when I started working in Rappahannock County, I knew that this was going to be my home. And when I make a place my home, I want to immerse myself into it and its community, whether that's working in nine-one system or the school system, apparently. I did not see this coming. Trust me, if you ask me back when I was in high school, where do you see yourself in twenty years, it was not here. But one day during the summer, I was sitting at home, you know, contemplating like where my life choices are gonna go and where I'm gonna be taken, and I was just kind of sitting there asking God, I'm like, hey, what's next? Where do I, where do you need me? Where do I need to be led? And I kid you not, two minutes later, I get a call from Ms. Danny Pons, who is like, hey, I have a very just random question for you. Would you be interested in teaching a class? And I think the first thing that said came out of my mouth was, I'm not qualified, I'm not a, I don't have a master's degree in, in teaching. I feel like that was always kind of a necessity. But they reassured me that, hey, you're very qualified and you have a lot of good things that can come to this class. So I took the leap of faith, I listened to God, and here I am, trying my very best to teach this group of sixteen kids how to be EMTs, which has been absolutely amazing. Not only are they learning the basic fundamentals of how to do patient assessments and vitals, but I would like them to be able to leave my class with a good sense of accountability for themselves as a student in their school and hopefully young adults, but also how to be leaders. I think the world does much better when we have leaders and kind-hearted leaders, so that is something that they are really focused on in my class, is how to help people, but also how to be good human beings outside of the classroom. So I'm very thankful to be here, and please come on by any morning. I'd be happy to show you what we're doing, and the kids love the team-building days that we have when we're outside doing races to see who can be the fastest in full turnout gear. They, they thought that was just great, so if you come on one of those days, you might have to wear some gear, so just be prepared. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I'm very, very happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, our two students, they did have a scheduling conflict, but they were gonna come and do a demonstration for the board this evening about some of the activities. As Catherine said, please come back at any time for her class and any of our classes. We look forward to showing you the magnet that we're creating here at the high school.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seward. Any questions for members of the board? Thanks so much. All right, our next update is an accreditation update. So to provide that presentation, I'm gonna invite Karen Ellis, our academic services coordinator, to the podium. A lot of talk around this, a lot of changes happening even as we speak this week. So we're gonna try to keep you abreast of everything as we know about it. We'll pull up her presentation here for you.
So good evening to the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I just wanna add one thing. We really hit the jackpot when we got Kat. I've had several meetings with her, and so we just are really fortunate to have her. She's amazing. But I did want to talk to you tonight about accreditation and where we stand this year. So tonight I'm gonna share some data with you, lots of numbers, and I'm happy to answer questions as best that I can here. I'm no expert in accreditation, it's a pretty deep topic, but nonetheless, I'm gonna do my best. So I'm pleased to tell you that tonight that we are fully accredited in both schools this school year. So very pleased to bring you that information tonight. We have some work to do, but we have some areas where we made some great gains this year. And I'm gonna kind of talk, like I said, I'm gonna show you a lot of numbers here in a minute, but last week, VOE released the school quality, the school quality profile, and I believe it was Thursday, which is a little later than they normally do, so really we're still really digging into lots of numbers, lots of data, looking for trends and things like that. But I do want to tell you, so at the elementary school, this is one of the first things you'll see in the school quality profile. There are six school quality indicators that schools can perform between level one and level three, and those, they're kind of lumped into three categories. So the first category is your academic achievement, and you see, we have three academic achievement indicators, English, math, and science. And this is for all students, so everybody put together, where did we stand in English, math, and science? So state benchmark for English is seventy-five percent or higher, math is seventy percent or higher, and science is seventy percent or higher. So across the board, academic achievement, all students, we were at that state benchmark or higher. And I'll talk more about that in a minute, how, how you get the level of thing. In the middle there, we see the accredited achievement gap. So here we have some work to do, but let me, I'm gonna explain a little bit more in a minute. There are, we only do achievement gaps in English and math, so science is just overall. English and math, we have subgroups of students, and I'm gonna show you the subgroups and how each group performed. What I want to tell you is that all of our subgroups were at a level one except for two subgroups, and again, we'll talk more about those subgroups in a minute. It was our students with disabilities, and then surprisingly, our multiple races this year, we have, we barely meet that cut of not being too small in that category. So both those categories, because they both had a level three, that's where the overall level three came from. All our other subgroups were at level one. And then in math, a level two is when you have two or more subgroups at a level two, they're almost meeting state benchmarks but not quite, or you have one level three. And again, at the elementary school, all our subgroups were at level one except for our students with disabilities. They were at level three, so that kicked us overall to a level two. Lots kind of fine rules and little things in there, and I'll try to answer those questions as I go through numbers. And then the other quality indicator at the elementary school is student engagement and outcomes, and there's only one school quality indicator for the elementary, and that's chronic absenteeism. And I'm pleased to report that we are at a level one. I'll talk more about numbers in a minute, but we did increase or improve our rating under chronic absenteeism. If we go to the next slide, this is the high school's school accreditation quality indicators there for, and again, you can see, green is what we are always striving to be. In the academic achievement, there are still the same three categories, English, math, and science. Still a seventy-five percent state benchmark for English, math and science at a seventy. So when all students are put together and just all students performed at a level one level for all three categories. Little different at the high school because they also, English is not just reading, it's reading and writing. So writing in eighth and eleventh grade or end of course, which is typically the eleventh grade, and then you have reading in those two grade levels. So their English, elementary and middle or more, or sixth and seventh or more, just are reading tasks. This is reading and writing put together. And in achievement gaps, English, again, if you have one at a level, at a level three, or two or more level twos, then you get kicked to a level three. In English, we are at a level three. Again, we'll talk more about those, that subgroup in a second, but I do want to note that last year, math was at a level two in that subgroup, and that will be something I highlight in a minute. We did manage to improve from a level two to a level one. So in math, level, our students with disabilities, well, I'll say that for a minute when you see the numbers, because it makes a little more sense. And then as far as student engagement outcomes, there are four in this category. Remember, the elementary school, we just have chronic absenteeism. At the high school, they have chronic absenteeism, they have what we call the college career and civic readiness index, our dropout rate, and then our graduation and completion rate. And we were at, we were at the exact same levels as last year, we're the level one for this college career and civic readiness index, the dropout and the graduation and completion, that's excellent. Chronic absenteeism was at a level two last year, and it still is, but I'll show you some numbers in a minute. It drastically improved this year. We're almost at a level one there, we were just a couple percentage points away. Okay, so what I call the glows and the grows are glows. Again, I want to note that both schools are fully accredited this year. It's always a good thing, we strive to be fully accredited, so both schools are fully accredited. I also want to note that the RCHS chronic absenteeism, it dropped from twenty-four point seven percent down to eight point six five percent, and so that's where we went from a level two to a level one this year, so a drastic drop. Of course, we're coming out of pandemic, things are getting back to normal or as close as we can get, so we were hopeful to see that. I am also pleased to announce that in science, we had a brand-new science test in fifth grade, and we worked really hard, Mr., I'm gonna just say it, Mr. Way, because he's the only one that teaches it. It's fourth and fifth grade science, so I do want to stress that it's two levels, but he does a lot of review incorporated. And on a brand-new test, they scored nineteen percentage points higher than they did last, the year before on our old test. So last year, that's our year for science, oh, you were level one, because you can still be a level one with your three-year average, but last year, we were at a level three, can't remember the exact number, but it was in the sixties, and we had an eighty-four percent, I should say, the school had an eighty-four percent pass rate, and that just was amazing. I can tell you, the state average was around sixty-six percent for, we should break into fifth grade science test. So definitely an area where we saw a vast improvement. At the high school, I'll show some numbers in a second, maybe I should just read, but at the high school, the math achievement gap, overall accreditation rating, if you remember, it was at a level one this year. That was an improvement from that level two last year. All our subgroups in math at the high school, except for our students with disabilities, all the other subgroups were at a level one, meaning they met state benchmark, and our students with disability subgroup, they went from a level three to a level two by reducing the failure rate by ten percent. And I'll show you some numbers, but they were really hard, and we saw a vast improvement in math for that subgroup, for all those subgroups. This, I apologize, I should have double-checked, I did it right before I came, and I was like, oh, you've already put this, got this loaded. RCHS, for in English, the economically disadvantaged subgroup improved to a level one, because in that, that subgroup, also in English, we reduced the failure rate by ten percent. So, and then also in English, the next one should say, RCHS in English, the L subgroup improved to a, from a level two to a level one and surpassed state benchmarks with a seventy-seven point two seven percent pass rate, which is amazing. And then the chronic absenteeism, while we remained at a level two, it dropped from thirty-two point seven nine percent, so thirty-two point seven nine percent of our population missed more than ten percent of the school year, which is equates to about eighteen days or more. And we, it dropped to seventeen point four two percent. If we got it, if we get it down to fifteen, we're in that level one range again. So we're working hard to do that this year. Crystal Smith is on that. Mr. Seward, this one's, you're there, there's a lot, you've probably seen it on social media and come to school.
I was just wondering, can I, do you mind if I just have a question about this slide? I was just with the, with the high school math, I know that our students here, they're taking different, who's being tested in that? Is that every person in high school?
In math. So. In math, we're eight through twelve, which is different than most high schools. So we have our eighth grade math class, which is pre-algebra. We have some of our eighth graders do pre-algebra in Algebra I part year, so they have Algebra I. We have, most of those tests are Algebra I. Most of our students receive their verified credit in Algebra I, and then they don't have to take any more math as the level assessment, they're still taking math class. So there are, but there's a group for geometry, some students that still need that verified credit, so they test in geometry, where geometry scores are always phenomenal. And then there could be a couple that, in Algebra II, just a couple, right?
Yeah, so it's mostly the earlier grade.
Yes. Most of them have that verified credit by the end of ninth grade or by the end of tenth. Yes, which makes that even more impressive to me, I think, because the ones that have not traditionally been successful in taking those in the later grades still resulted in the subgroup category, reducing to that level one. So that's pretty impressive. Any other questions before? Keep it on up.
What do you want to?
Energy saving.
Keep it on.
Keep it on, no?
Your balls, the gentleman.
They're not, they're not, they're not cut down.
No.
Okay.
There we go. Yes or no? I don't use this.
All right. And then next slide. So we have some growths, and we have some areas, and I know principals are bringing new SIP plans next month, so a lot of this accreditation, this plays a key role in developing our SIP plans for the year, and school improvement plans, I'm sorry, education is all about Africa. If you don't know, you just have to ask, I've learned that. So school improvement plans, principals will be bringing those to you next month, if you're gonna play this. However, so this really drives those plans in some regards to the academic pieces for accreditation. I mean, there's way more that we know to our students' experience and their school experience than just this data. So this is what I'm here to highlight tonight. But students with disabilities, we definitely a focus area in reading. We had fifty percent pass this year or showed growth, and that was compared to seventy-eight percent last year. So we did see a drop there, so we were putting some things in place. Like I said, the principals will incorporate some things into their SIP to address that category, that subgroup in reading. And also at the, an elementary school, I'm sorry, students with disabilities, not only in reading, but also in math, fifty-four percent passed compared to sixty-four percent the previous year. So we did see a dip in that subgroup that we're working to address. At the high school, again, students with disabilities, we know they made gains in math and we want to keep those, so that's still a focus. We're not gonna take the foot off the pedal there, but we do know that students with disabilities in reading, we had forty-three point four eight percent pass compared to fifty percent the previous year.
What's the difference in the number and category between last year and this year? Is there a significant difference in the number of students? I mean, you can deal with percentages left and right.
That we're taking it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe it was a huge.
Is it ten or?
Thank you.
Exactly, and that's, and that's something. So we had, at the elementary school, thirty-six tests at the elementary school last year, at the previous year, so twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and we had thirty-nine last year. So it's a difference.
That's not a significant number.
No. But yeah, that is, that's a very good question, a very valid point, and that's why, you know, I can throw in numbers at you all night, there's just, you know. But then when I look at like the English at high school, making sure I'm looking the right thing, we had thirty-six tests in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we only had twenty-three tests last year. That's a significant difference in the number of students tested. So they, those are things that we always, you know, we have to look and dig a little deeper too, but good question. And then overall pass rates in science, you know, this is not unique to us, we've seen this across the state, but science, we had a sixty-four percent pass rate. That would mostly be your eighth grade, all your eighth graders taking a test that's on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade material. And with COVID impacts and obstruction, some of that, they are, they also had a new test as well. Some of them that don't, some of them take, most students get their biology verified credit in ninth grade, however, if they don't earn that credit, then they're usually doing it through fourth science the following year. So the numbers of students that are taking those tests decreases, but there's students that are taking their science typically haven't been successful on the biology, and that's why they have to take their science typically. There's some other reasons why students might be taking our science. But the three-year average, you know, we're still at a seventy-five point six two percent, we're at level one, but we need, we're paying very close attention to alignment and curriculum in those grade levels. We have things in place this year. Now numbers, if you're a numbers person like me, numbers. What I did, I had to really kind of think about, you know, how to display it and what, what you might want to know. So what I did was I looked at two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and I compared it to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and I'm sure there are gonna be some questions here, but I'll try to explain. So in the English, let's just take English where it's available. Six, at, at the elementary school, I'm sorry, sixty-five percent of our students, what we call passed, they reached that four hundred proficient benchmark. Seventy-seven percent, what, for accreditation combined, that would include your recovery students and your growth. So in grades three through eight, you can show growth, which is basically, the state provides us our growth tables, I'll talk more about that in a minute, and then you can recover students if they failed the year before, but they pass the next year, we call that recovery, and that helps out our accreditation rate as well. How, if you look at two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, how did we do? Well, sixty-six percent of our students met that four hundred benchmark. It's pretty much the same, but we had an eighty-seven percent combined rate. So you say, well, how did that come to be? Pretty much the same amount passed, but the growth, the state measured growth differently. They measured it very differently from two thousand twenty-one till last year, and we have nothing to do with that. We don't know, we did, we don't know how they're gonna do it until after the students have taken the test. I mean, I'm just trying to explain from. I mean, I'm just trying to explain from our point of view. It's kind of like, someone said earlier, it's kind of like a goalpost that keeps getting moved, but you're not privy to where it is when you take the goal.
Is gun changing in this?
So.
It's not helpful information.
Right. So, but I, I thought it was important for you to see that the pass, what the pass rates were at four hundred, they're pretty much the same. But it's the growth that was measured differently that attributes, that accounts for the difference in combined. For math at the elementary school, sixty-five percent of our students got to that magic four hundred or higher. Eighty percent when you included their growth or recovery students, which compares to fifty-nine percent in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. So we are making some gains back to that pre-pandemic level there. But then when you look at the combined rate, it's eighty-six percent. Again, different than how we measure growth. And you can only measure growth in grades three through eight. So that, that accounts for the difference there. And in science, I've already told you, eighty-four percent pass rate, sixty-five percent the previous year. That eighty-four is on a brand-new test with brand-new SOLs that are very challenging. And so that was amazing in there. And then the next slide, the subgroups. So the subgroups that I talked about, these are the subgroups that we get rated on. And the first two were too small for our population. We're under thirty students. So that doesn't count into our accreditation. The two that are highlighted at the elementary school, multiple races this year. We had forty-three percent pass rate. When you counted in growth and recovery, we're at fifty-seven percent. And that, you know, we probably, that was very small, but enough that they counted in our accreditation. And our students with disabilities, twenty-eight percent pass rate, fifty percent when you do the combined with growth. And those were the two levels that got us to level three. Everyone else, every other subgroup was okay. And I did put the all students at the bottom, just so you can see what the subgroups are the first ones listed beside all students. And then for math, we really had one subgroup for math at the elementary school. This is what gave us a level two overall. We had one subgroup at a level three. Again, that was our students with disabilities. All the other subgroups, again, we came at a level one there. And then at the high school, again, comparing from two thousand twenty-one. So on the left is the current two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three scores. English, we had seventy-two percent pass. That's down a little bit from the previous year at seventy-five percent. But when you count in growth and recovery and growth, which they can only account for in eighth grade. So that's off the table for the end-of-course test. Seventy-seven percent for this year compared to eighty percent for last year, down a little bit. Math, we see gains, seventy-one percent made it to that proficient versus sixty-nine percent last year. Again, you can see the accreditation combined rate with growth. Again, recovery's only in eighth grade, so we don't capture as many in the growth at the high school level. And then science, again, that's an area of focus this year with some alignment issues there that we're, we're addressing. Sixty-four percent, we had a sixty-four percent pass rate. And that was down from the previous year of seventy percent. Again, that was a new test. Typically, you do see an implementation dip, which was really amazing that we didn't on the fifth grade test. We actually saw so much in gain percentage points. And then the subgroups for the high school, same subgroups as the elementary. First two were still too small. Again, that multiple races for English and students with disabilities, those two were at a level three. So that's what gave us the level three overall. I did know earlier that economically disadvantaged, we're at a level one because we reduced that failure rate by ten percent in one year, which is pretty remarkable. And. Oh, and then also.
The art.
That's the reduction by ten percent. So we improved the level there. So there's all kinds of things. If you meet state benchmarks, if you reduce by ten percent, if your three-year average meets the state benchmark, there's all kinds of ways that that level comes in. So in a nutshell, that's, you know, the information I have to share. And like I said, there's a, there's a lot there. We have takeaways. We have a lot to be proud of, but we have a lot of work to do. We are, we've been on it all summer. We've been meeting this year. As Dr. Grimsen said, just in the last week, we've had new changes come our way. And so we've got a lot of work to do, a lot more than we even anticipated, but good stuff. It's exciting stuff. It's the stuff that I live for. All my kids are grown and they're not old. But teachers are working hard, students are working hard, admin is working hard, we are working hard. And, you know, like I said, this is a piece of our students' experience and it's an important piece. But there are so many great things that will be spotlighted this year too, that we provide our students and that we're very proud of. Any questions I can answer?
I was just wondering, so there are changes that we can have another next month accreditation opportunity.
So this, I'm going to talk about budget, what they've approved in code and the budget, which is coming up. So that's going to kind of, however, I just found out this morning that the Board of Education is going to consider different models of accreditation. It may actually vote Thursday. So.
See, it's.
So I've been sending some information to them about that. Hopefully, so this is what's happening. And a big, big one is, as you can see, how we measure growth, being a major contention point across the state, especially coming out of a pandemic. To me, you know, I've said this many times, that a balanced system that includes growth as much as achievement really should be considered at this point in education, in this landscape. And if you show that percentage of growth, the growth rates like you've seen here, that should really be weighted quite a bit more than just a straight achievement because of the recovery that you're able to implement in such a short time after what we've been through. So I'm hopeful that the models, they are looking at different models. The presentation is posted. And I can send that to anyone interested, because I've been digging through it. And they'll look at different pieces of that, how much growth, how much achievement, what indicator should it be?
They can put a percentage on each one?
They do. Yeah, it'll show you in the chart. So.
Growth is worth thirty-four percent.
There's a forty, forty-twenty. I've seen a sixty, thirty, ten. I've seen, there's a lot of different ones up for discussion. So. Our folks are asking the board to, and this is region four in Bass, we're asking the Board of Education to please not vote on that direction yet, because that's going to shape how this whole thing is going to pan out the rest of the year. I don't think it'll be implemented for the spring, but keep me surprised. So, but we're trying to say, can we bring that back for feedback? There's a lot of pieces in here that we didn't really see before that. So we should, we have a lot of input, a lot of data. And the growth measure, as you can see, the, the pass rates hadn't had too much fluctuation, but just in the way they changed the metric of growth, it took out half of our percentage points we would have achieved just from a different system. So, you know, this, this state game we play a lot, it happens a lot. Here's another example, years ago, when they took away BGLA's. Remember this? When we were teaching special education. The special education scores that you see, students with disabilities are taking that same SOL test. Everyone else is, with some accommodations. But before, we were able to show mastery throughout the year with Virginia grade level. Portfolios, demonstration, different ways. Students with disabilities may have a disability that really impacts the way that they take a regular standardized test. And no matter how many accommodations that you can give that are allowable on that kind of a test. So the state changes things all the time and we have to just kind of go with it. But we're not going to stop doing remarkable things for our kids. And no matter what the state says about, you know, these metrics, we're always going to go for the gold and get current year pass rates the best we can. But there's a lot of things that go into that. So.
So we have the SOL data for kids who scored above four hundred and kids who scored above five hundred. And kids who scored.
Yes.
Does that number, does that number change a lot or is it pretty consistent?
I haven't dug into, we just got this data on Thursday. So.
Oh, you had plenty of time.
But what I will tell you is that we're very mindful of all students showing growth. So even when those students get that magic four hundred, that's not the end game for us. That's, that's a minimum set by the state. So we do, we do dig into our students growing. Are we seeing students that typically score in this range? Or are they still making growth and scoring in those ranges as they move up? Because that's part of the conversation too. So to answer your question, yes, we dig into all that. We did get these high school quality profiles a little later than we typically do with all the data that they just released on Thursday. So there's a lot to dig into. Yes.
And is it true, I feel like I remember them saying like in subareas, like it's not just the numbers, it's sort of different parts of the math or different parts of it.
It is.
That's how you can use it to translate into inspection.
Yes.
And then we, of course, add our own layers of assessments throughout the year to also gather more data about kids' proficiency, where they are on mastery levels. So that inform our interventions and instructional remediation groups and all of that stuff. But I love that Karen did say that, that growth is really important too, because if you're just getting them to the benchmark and that's it, well, your kids who just do that naturally and you're gifted kids and they need enrichment too. So we all want to see every kid grow, you know, so that's a big emphasis.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. See why she has my old job? She makes crazy people laugh. Yep. All right. Our next presentation is the Student Code of Conduct update. So Dr. Carol Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent, is going to give this presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. So every other year, we're required to do an update of our student code of conduct. So it's the odd years and we're in the odd year. So we did pull together a group of stakeholders this summer to review our document. And our, our, our student code of conduct has been modeled after the state guidance for quite a few years. And our document has served us quite well over the course of the years that we've been utilizing it. So there weren't a lot of changes that were made to the document this year. I had had the opportunity to send you guys a copy of this for your review over the weekend. So you've already had a chance to see it. So I'm just going to highlight the things that did change this year. So on page number seventeen, our group discussed this year some of the things that were related to school safety. So one of the first areas was on page seventeen, the area of assault and battery. So when we look at the corrective actions, we sometimes have them broken out by elementary school and high school. So for elementary, previously, we had in there that it could potentially be a level one, a level two, or a level three. So a level one is something that basically the teacher can take care of. Guidance counselors, level two is going to be a referral to the principal, possibly ISS. And then level three are going to be your out-of-school suspensions, referral into the community. So our team felt that it was very important that we send a message that we are about safety, that we are a safe school. So for, we removed it for the elementary that it potentially be a level one. And if it's an assault and battery, it's going to be a level two or a level three to get that message out there. Also, on that same page, attendance. So the only change that we made in the student code of conduct was that students need to be present by eight-twenty. And so in the past, it had said that students need to be present by nine o'clock in the morning. And I'm not sure where that ever came from, but we have seen over the course of the last couple of years, especially at the high school level, that a lot of the students were arriving at nine o'clock or later.
And fifty-eight, I think.
It was, the, the team felt that it was important that students were to be in their place on time. So we did bring that to eight-twenty. Also on that page, we had bullying. And again, we took out in the elementary, going to potentially be a level one. There is no level one bullying. If it's bullying, it's going to be a level two with three consequences. On the next page, on page number eighteen, with cell phones, this is always a loudly area of discussion every time we, we meet about the student code of conduct. So after reviewing cell phone policies across the state of Virginia, most of them are utilizing the same thing that we were doing. The only changes that we made to this were, I think there was a line in there about the student's phone could be confiscated, and we did take that out. And then it seems that students had been using, allowed to use their cell phone previously during class changes. So we added that in here as a time where students could utilize their cell phones. But that was the only change that was made to that. On page number nineteen, fighting, again, there is no level one fighting. So all of that would be treated as a level two or three. On page nineteen, in the past, we've had this, this section in there for laser pointers, like ever since the nineteen nineties. And I don't even know that kids know what a laser pointer is right now. So we decided we could remove that.
This way it'll come back.
On the next page, twenty, reckless endangerment, again, there is no level one reckless endangerment. So all of those are level two or three. Page twenty-one, sexual harassment, stalking and trespassing are all level two or three. There is no level one there. Again, everything in here has been double-checked to be sure that it's reflecting the model guidance that's been given by the Virginia Department of Education. And at the very end of this, we did include the exact policy that's in the school board manual for JFC, because it says in JFC that we will provide an exact copy of that regular policy to the parents. So that's input in there as per our policy. The other piece of this that was really the most, most time-taking part of our discussion this summer was dress code. And dress code is always such a hot topic. So our student code of conduct does not specifically have anything in there about dress code. Under disruption, it has a caveat in there that if students dress disruption, disrupts instruction, then it will be dealt with. In our school board policy, we have had a regulation about the code of responsible student dress. And this one, the one that we currently have, was last updated in two thousand fourteen, but the original was added in two thousand and five. So in reviewing, you know, everything right now as far as student dress is intended to be gender neutral. So school divisions have been updating their dress codes for the last couple of years. And they have implemented gender-neutral language and references in that student dress code, which makes it a bit challenging. So in reviewing our previous regulation, there were some specific references in there to blouses that are strapped, or perhaps spaghetti straps, which is obviously for femaleers. Air midriff outfits. There were things in there that specifically pointed to gender. So as a group, we wanted to update our student dress code to reflect that more neutral language. So Dr. Grimsen, you can go to the recommended regu, or the regulation that we're intending to add. So basically. Oh, okay, this is a new project. So basically, we took, this top section here is from, basically from our previous regulation that we had. And the next section is what we revised. So we have a very generic statement here about what student dress is expected to be. These things are pretty much always included in a dress policy because they're related to safety. The, the caveats in here are, in the second sentence, any clothing that interferes with or disrupts the educational environment is unacceptable. So that's a very broad statement and can be interpreted in many different ways. But legally, if we're having a dress code issue, that statement covers us.
Boots, the bottoms.
No boots.
No boots.
And then.
You can wear them just not the foot.
Right. And then this other section, they shall not expose private body parts or show an excessive amount of their skin, senior clothing, et cetera. So again, that interpretation of, you know, what is an excessive amount can be argued between people. But, you know, again, this, this covers us legally as far as being gender neutral and getting the message out there while we expect for student dress. However, at the very bottom, you will see we have a caveat in there because a lot of our discussion was really getting into the nitty gritty of what the dress code should look like, so that there weren't any places in there for guessing, you know, where a student could say, well, this isn't necessarily excessive. And so the high school in particular wanted to have something that was a little bit more concrete. So the high school has been working on something at the, the school level for their students that would be added to their student handbook. And I think that they're in the, the process right now of getting feedback from staff members on that. I think students are going to have an opportunity to chime in on that as well. But again, that's going to be something that will be up to the building level if they want to make a more specific one. The only thing that we have asked them to do is to share that with the equity team before it becomes a final document that goes to, you know, into the student handbook, just for that second look, to be sure that there's nothing in there that could be considered discriminatory against any, any gender or protecting. This, this new one, I don't think has been put in yet.
It's on board, regulation.
It's on board documents.
It'll be added to the policy as long as we're having discussion now. So regulations don't really need a vote. Those are up to the administration to implement. But we did want to get, before the board, before we update that policy. And how about the high school one? Will that come before us at one, whenever that is finished or can just go to the board?
That one right now would go to the equity team review. And then if it's, if it's okay with them, then it would go straight to the board. Because it's, it is a regulation, so for party regulations.
As long, but it has to meet policy. It can't go against what policy says, so it's going to be more specific.
In addition to.
Exactly. Where it's specific.
But without being.
Right.
Save me about ten hours of meeting the rest of the board.
Brilliant.
Any questions? Thank you Carol. All right, just to update you here as well, we have our bids, our annual booth bids. Concerns bids, let's see if we can see these. So Julie sent those over, Julie Banks. Looks like the same vendors we've used in the past.
Very good.
Look the same, okay. I don't think we've changed up too much yet. But with our new grant, we're making some changes on how that works, but not yet. So we're still going with these bids to purchase. All right, now the budget update. And I apologize, I didn't have the final slides last week. I was told that we would have more information yesterday and then maybe this morning. I didn't receive anything else and we still don't have a calculation tool. So I'm going to use what I have at this point. So it stayed past the budget, sort of.
Yeah.
So what's happened is the, the general assembly came back together in a special session to look at the surplus. They, of course, had all of these months to make behind the scenes closed door deals. So what they were going to do in this special session, finally decided and called the governor and said, okay, we think we have some compromises on the tax relief bills and what we want to do with the surplus. So we're ready to come back together and vote. So that's what happened. They came in, really big public education budget. So you're in House Bill six thousand and one, it does increase support for public education by six hundred and forty-five million dollars. So that's, that is a big investment. You break it down a little bit, but there's, you know, some, some strings attached a little bit. And we'll go through kind of what that looks like. So in that package that they've passed is a flexible funding supplement. So four hundred and eighteen million dollars is going into that flex fund. That is one time money. So just one time dollars that we would get, similar to kind of what Esser did for us. So school divisions are being strongly encouraged to use seventy percent or more of that money to address learning loss and also implement the Virginia Literacy Act and implement the new high intensity tutoring program. So all of that, they've said to use this money to help do that. We're going to have some heavy reporting requirements on that funding. And of course, they're going to make it subject to LCI and ADM, but they're learning and did put a minimum floor in there. So no school district could earn less than a hundred and fifty thousand, which we would have had they just done LCI alone. So luckily we have a floor, so at least we get a hundred and fifty thousand out of that pot. Two percent salary increase, which is a total of a seven percent for the fiscal year. That's going to be effective January first. And that is all of our school employees as well as your county employees. So that's part of what that money goes toward. Support positions. So we have been advocating for quite some time to remove the support position cap. Because again, as if our own LCI isn't a cap enough on, on our SOQ positions. Our support position cap further limits the amount of state funding you receive for any support position. So that's your assistant superintendent, that's your, any of your secretaries, that's also your nurses. It's also, all these people that are vital to schools. But they don't fund them at the same level as an instructional SOQ required position. So that is changing. They are lending it, raising it a little. They're not removing it altogether. So twenty-one positions per one thousand was the ratio, it's twenty-four now. So that'll help us a little bit. And then that big J-LARC study that we were actually a part of and helped get a lot of their data for, did release their report. So now the general assembly wants to have their own subcommittee to go through this report and come up with a timeline, prioritize those recommendations, and decide how that's going to work. Remember when J-LARC did present this, they saw it as a ten year strategy. So I don't know how quickly they'll move on that, but they say they're going to have a report in November. Yeah. Yeah, November twenty twenty-four, sorry. So over a year, yeah, just to say what they're going to do. So it may take a little bit longer. Here's the support cap dilemma that we've talked about. As, as you can see, just rapid handic between the years of twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-two, were limited, the seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we weren't getting because of this cap alone. Over the course of that time, which should be funding and be used prevailing costs on those support positions. So it's still a huge problem, but there's a lot to fix. School security grants, more money going into that. We have applied. You typically, they let you know around mid to late August about whether or not you've received a grant. They've just approved this budget, so I think they're waiting. So we'll see. I think we applied for close to seventy-five thousand dollars in that grant program. We have applied every year, the last three haven't gotten any money for that. Virginia Literacy Act, some additional funding in there. The six point seven million though, that's going for the state contract. So the state has put out an RFP to get a program for the hot, the free high intensity tutoring program for your grades three through, three through age. Free through a, reading and math. So that is supposed to be available to all school districts. This is going to be different than the learning grants that had come out before for families with their own private tutoring. This will provide schools another tool that the state is paying for, to have students assessed and supposedly with an AI component that will also spiral review, find deficits and skills, and then also help whoever your tutoring program aligns with, whether it's your own teachers or whoever the school district hires, I don't have to hear that, to then deliver interventions either in after school, before school, during the school day, your regular intervention blocks, however we can make that happen. So the RFP is out. They'll have to turn that around very quickly though, because we need to have a plan by October sixteenth. No problem, we got it. Early childhood, teacher licensure requirements for VPI mixed delivery providers have to meet quality expectations. That really hasn't been a problem for us for our VPI program, because we always have our licensed teachers teaching that blended classroom. And then also increasing the staff to child ratios for child day centers to address workforce challenges. So that more affects our folks across the street at CCLC who do run a mixed delivery program. So that's the overall overview of what the budget is at this point. The governor still has a shot to amend it and send back changes. I really doubt he'll do that at this point, because we've waited so long and there's so many things to get going on the agenda, that I really don't see him holding back. And then, because then it would have to go back for a second special section, another vote, and all this is hung up. So I believe that'll get through this week. But then we have a chance at the caboose bill. So that's still your FY twenty-four remaining funds for the rest of the year. It'll come out in December. And that one, I'm still optimistic that our supplemental basic aid request is still there. It's still alive. So it's not dead yet, we're not going to let them kill it. So in that, that's our million dollars that we've been really working toward getting. It's not dead yet. And if it's not in the caboose bill, then I'm very hopeful it's in the governor's next by any of FY twenty-four to twenty-six proposal. Twenty-five.
So.
So.
So we've just been, we know that what's coming is two percent.
Yes.
Increase, right? And, and.
It's about a hundred percent.
It's seventy percent of. And so where did I see this number?
It is. It is. So you happen to see this. A distribution chart that the state gave out. This is an approximation of the district distributions and allocations. So if we go down to rapid handic, you can see our little pocket, and that's about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars right here. So one fifty, there's our baseline. We get this for our thirty-six hundred dollars or so for your implementing your VLA. Oh, support staff. So they gave us a few thousand extra dollars for that. And then additional two percent compensation supplement is about eleven thousand. So that's going to cost overall about fifty or so thousand.
Two percent?
Yeah, because it's implemented in January, so it's a mid-year. But you have to remember that for the.
It's got to turn it over to the next question.
The following year, this year, we'll be able to do it with the funding. Plus, they're calculating our ADM on six sixty-six. And our ADM is much closer to about seven seventy right now. So that additional revenue plus the one sixty-five here, and the things we've already put in place, knowing some of the VLA, Virginia Literacy Act pieces and the intervention pieces, then we still think we'll be okay without asking the county for any additional funding based on this additional revenue for this year.
When does, when does that number get adjusted, the ADM? Is that adjusted?
March thirty-first.
It's great.
Yes. Yeah. ADM, yeah, about seven seventy?
Seven seventy-six.
Six sixty, yeah. So we're about a hundred students ahead in ADM. We're higher than that when you look at our, sorry, ADM is about seven fifty-six. Overall enrollment's close to seven eighty when you consider preschool. So that's a lot of kids, a lot more kids than we've had.
That's great.
Yes. It is.
I, I, I could look at the, the homeschool thing, it's down from last year as well.
Quite a bit, yes. So a lot more homeschool families coming to the public school. Yeah, and a lot of out of county.
Right. So, so previously, we've been making noise and communicating related to HB fourteen forty-three. And if you look online now, tracking a fourteen, I'm not speaking up in. Tracking a fourteen, tracking a fourteen forty-three, it says that it's dead. If you go to look.
It is dead.
So, but the intent of fourteen forty-three, if we were to be provoking conversation, it should be that that language should be included in the caboose bill. And that's the thing that we should be speaking to our representatives about?
You can. The caboose bill is largely going to be put in place by the governor. So, but that is a speaking point and one that I feel like he has already heard. So whether it gets into the caboose or the by any budget is, I'm not sure which one, but I'm, got it on decent authority, so it's there. So that's really great news. I'm just not sure if it's in the caboose, which, you know, the caboose bill I'm less concerned with than the next by any.
The next by any.
When, could you just give dates again for the, when does the caboose happen?
They happen almost simultaneously.
They do.
So the caboose bill will come out December tenth, I believe, right around that time. And then you'll see the by any proposal around that same period of time. So how are we going to finish off fiscal year twenty-four? And then with that, this is why I'm justifying what I'm going to do in my by any budget.
There's no, there's a chance that we have to continue frothing.
Just keep doing what you're doing, keep speaking about how important it is. The J-LARC study only affirmed what we've said. So we have to continue with that, that narrative. And that's keep pressing your representatives that way. But I think we've done a great job making a lot of noise the past few years, so. Yes. So we will see. But it's not dead yet, we're not going to stop till that cap is removed. It's a very simple language piece that we can, we can handle that, so.
And the staff have been communicated with, or will be that even though they're going to get the two percent, it's only for half this whole year?
Right, yes. So it will be effective January first, which that's when the raise will be done, that's right. If I can clarify that further. Where it's not retroactive.
Yes, I did.
It's generally a contract.
It's a contract.
Yeah.
And if you say it's seven, it should be seven for a contract.
Yes. That's how I agree with you, but I don't think they were.
If you're a staff member and your retirement is based on your annual, now you've got.
A weird year.
You've got a weird year.
You do.
You got an annual, you've got an annual budget, an annual contract that has an additional two percent.
It's amended contract. Because the contracts right now are based on five.
So we have to remodel, we have to model.
It'll be, it'll be an amendment. We've done this before, this is not.
You have to add the two percent to the contract.
Yep. So that'll go up in January. Mary? Great. Any other questions about that? A lot of stuff. We've got a great team and they're really on it. Even our principals meeting this morning, when I'm reading them all this news and then Mr. Seward and Karen Ellis and Jen Wissinger, oh yeah, we already have all these pieces, so we have to report this to you and we already did all this and here's all the data. I was like, those are amazing, gosh.
Yes, they're a great team.
Really great team, they are magical, so.
Moving on. These five reported headquarters.
And this is what I have to say, yeah, I was actually at one meeting that was with, at the elementary school to discuss support for the courtyard with the new, with the new role that Brian Valmer just planned, the USDA role. Headwaters is providing the courtyard to replace a floor and a shed, to purchase items to restore the FishCon's waterfall feature and to purchase other materials, especially to get students working in the garden. And you can see pictures on Facebook of that happening. And they're also have it seeding and enhancing that area company, adding some other things to it. Headwaters hired a new reprogram coordinator. I don't know that person's name, so.
Coming soon?
It's coming soon, okay.
Coming soon.
It's hired, but it'll be broken. The work should, the work should develop a curriculum to support both the accelerated students and those who could benefit from additional reading support. So talking about both ends of that especially. If they'll continue to operate through after school and will start beginning in January twenty. It'll continue to operate through after school and will start again in January 2024.
Do we know how many days that's going to be? Are there still going to be two days?
That's what we're thinking, physically.
There's no, no way to increase that before.
And you can come volunteer for us. The Lions are going to come volunteer, right? I'm going to tell the Lions, you said that they were all going to come volunteer, so we can increase to four days.
We'll sponsor part of it. Others sponsor half a day or two.
That's it. We'll talk to that new coordinator.
Yeah.
I just think it's a vital, vital program. If you go four days, it's even more.
I think we're going to have really good material. That's a good goal here.
Yeah, that's great. So we get to see. And, um, they're looking to identify field trips for the 23, 24 school year. They have earmarked funding in the budget to support project-based and experiential learning for both, the students in both schools. And that will be future news as well. Um, the Harvest Festival is, is coming up really soon, very soon, in less than a month, October 7th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Eldon Farms and everybody's invited. And, um, there will be representation from the farm, from farm to table, the Ag Academy, art classes and student groups from both of our schools. And programs can showcase their talents and creations to the broader community. Tickets can be pre-ordered on the Headwaters website and there's discount rates available until August 15th. I mean, not August, it's September, whatever, whatever date it is.
We're in a different world right now.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. But that's, that's what's happening.
Thank you. We did not, we did not, we did not. Uh, next item is information. Floor Ridge Skill Trades Center grand opening October the 12th at 10:00 AM. So, uh, we have been, uh, invited and, uh, talked to several board members, I believe. Any number of us should plan to be there.
What is the timing at that?
It's 10, it's 10 to noon, I think. On the 12th, it's Thursday. Are you going to come?
Yes, I will be there.
Floor Ridge Tour, 7 o'clock, can you say?
We're about that.
Mr. Seward.
Yeah, it says it on.
At 10:00 AM.
10 is good, 10:00 AM on the Thursday, the 12th. So, and it's just good. So basically what we're announcing is more than two board members may show up at this thing, but we're not showing up to have a meeting. It's another event and we're just happening to be there. No, it's, it's not, it's not a meeting. It's, uh, there's no business. We're basically announcing it right now that we're potentially going to be there, I think greater than a number of two. We made two, so we self-restricted last time, and we didn't have to. So.
If it's a public event, yeah, you're fine to show up, just no transaction, any business.
Right, last year it was like a smaller tour, but this is like a grand.
This is their only time for this. It is, it's a grand opening and this, if you remember, gosh, over 10 years in the making, this place. Um, and we've talked about our trades academy, um, being born. We, we started one in Middletown back, um, from the Career Pathways Consortium, um, and with the idea that this one was only a couple of years behind the state contract that held up for the building of this building. Um, so it's opening, so excited to see this happen. Um, and that will open the doors literally to our trades academy network, hoping to get going.
Very exciting. All right, uh, moving on to poll the comments, if I'd like to address the board this evening.
I would.
Yes, Steph.
I'm Steph Ritter and I'm with Headwaters. And, um, I just wanted to remind you guys that we have funds for special ed or our, you know, students with disabilities that we can make available to, might help with, with upping those scores. You know, come up with a way for us to spend them, we'd be happy to do that. Then, um, treading on ground, which has probably been treaded on many, many times before, uh, I was thinking that mandatory summer school might also be a way of upping, upping these scores. I don't, I don't know whether you guys have the discretion, whether that's state mandated, but, um, I just wrote that up. I know, it's, it's, it's in the category of everybody knows everything.
Thank you. Thanks, Steph. Anybody else? All right, um, certain new business? Any requests for future dead IOs? Our next board meeting is, uh, Tuesday, 10? At 6:30 and we were going to TBD, where are we going to meet? Back in this room? What do we think?
What do you guys think?
It's very opposed to personal, isn't it?
So we can hear you.
I mean, honestly, that's our goal. We can share the information and you can hear, okay?
Yeah.
I think that hearing is a really good.
Well, good, no, it's not.
Really good.
Okay, that'll be our intention. All right, Steph.
Discuss and consider the appointment of staff of professional positions, classified positions, coaching positions, resignation of classified positions and the retirement of classified positions for Sillit, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 3711.
A1. Do we have a second?